I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 20th, 2013 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the city council chambers. We've got a couple of presentations. Chief, you want to join me at the podium? Mr. Anderson and Mr. Rock, you want to come up to the podium? Council will be honored tonight of swearing in two new firefighters, very different names. They're both Aaron. How did we do that? I understand there might be a nickname associated with it, but we won't go there. I want to ask the chief to do an introduction, and then we'll do the official swearing in of the office.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you might remember that back in the fall, we had two of our members resign to go on to different opportunities. We went through a testing process through the winter, early spring, and we ended up with the two Arons. We are very happy to have them. Aaron Anderson, over here, has an Associate's in Fire Protection Technology from Metro Community College, bachelor's degree from Bellevue University. He started out years ago as a cadet with the Ralston Fire Department, then became a volunteer, full-fledged volunteer for Ralston, and then got hired by the Hastings Fire Department about five years ago, and then I stole him away from Chief Gilbert and brought him back home to Papillion. We're very happy to have him here. He has his fiancee, Megan, back there, sons Hunter and Jayden, and his mom and dad, Terry and Nell, are with him tonight. And over here, Aaron Rock. Aaron is kind of a member of the family. Aaron spent seven years as a volunteer with us here in Papillion. And then, as our volunteers began to phase out, he went to Springfield and has made a real name for himself as a volunteer there. So he's got 10 years of experience in the fire service. Aaron told me that he took his first fire service exam trying to get hired as a full-time firefighter in 2001. Here we are in 2013, and he achieved his goal and his dream. So we're very happy to have him here. He's joined by his wife Jenny, their kids Gracie and Bryson, and his parents Dennis and Karen. So, welcome.
Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
that I take this obligation freely
And that I take this obligation freely.
and without mental reservation
And without mental reservation.
or for purpose of evasion
Or for purpose of evasion.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially.
perform the duties of the office
Perform the duties of the office.
of firefighter
Of firefighter.
according to law
According to law.
and to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
and I do further swear
And I do further swear.
that I do not advocate
That I do not advocate.
or am I a member of
Or am I a member of.
any political party or organization
Any political party or organization.
that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
or of this state
Or of this state.
by force or violence
By force or violence.
and that during such time
During such time.
as I am in this position
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate
I will not advocate.
nor become a member
Nor become a member.
of any political party or organization
Of any political party or organization.
that advocates the overthrow
That advocates the overthrow.
of the government of the United States
Of the government of the United States.
or of this state
Or of this state.
by force or violence
By force or violence.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Got the official badges that we'll have pinned on. Are they numbered?
Yeah.
Need you guys to signature on the oath. Does that put us at full force for the time being? Okay. For about a week. Next, we have a presentation from the Mayor's Youth Council. If you ladies want to come up, if you'd introduce each of yourselves as well.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Ashley Blunk. I am a senior at Papillion La Vista South, and I just got re-elected president of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council that we have.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Hernandez, and I will be a senior at Papillion South like this year, and I am a member of the council.
Hi, I'm Leah Pfeiffer. I'm also a senior at Papillion South, and I'm a council member.
Hi, I'm Dylan Zinzer. I'm the Mayor's Youth Council Liaison Leader, so I'm in charge of the lower council, and I'm a senior at South.
Alrighty, and we're basically here to keep you up to date on what the council has been doing lately. And so, our latest event, we went out to the Gretna 4-H Camp out at Schram Park, and so we had a little leadership retreat out there. And so, we're just four of the people who attended, and so we'd like to tell you what we learned and stuff out there. So, Dylan would like to start us off.
Okay. They pretty much took us through different, like, ropes course, I guess you could say. I don't know if you guys are familiar with, like, outdoor ed, but you go out there, like, during sixth grade, and you do, like, high-rope courses, like, it was the Odyssey course and things like that. But it taught you, like, leadership skills and how to, you know, interact with, like, other people, part of your team, and how to... You don't always have to be the leader. Everybody else can be a leader in their own way.
And one thing we found is that even though we do have a leader as a president, we were each able, as a team, to find our own leadership roles and work together towards a common goal, so.
Also, at the end of the first night, we had a little meeting, I guess pow-wow, around the campfire, and we talked about what our, like, goals are for this year as a youth council, and we just are really hoping to expand and to grow and to find ways to grow and to keep things up to date and put on things that people want to do and just grow as an organization and that we really look forward to this year.
Yep. They basically covered it all. We learned a lot about, with each challenge we were faced out at the 4-H Camp, we learned about delegation and who steps into those certain situational type leadership roles, and it was a good bonding experience for us, and I definitely learned a lot from it. And so, we're really looking forward to maybe doing another one in the future and growing like that. And so, yep, that's about all... That's what we have been up to, and we're getting sister cities rolling. We're trying to get that, and so we've got a bunch of new stuff planned, and we're getting some more positions. We're, like, delegating more chair-type things so everybody in the council can have a delegated role on what to do for the 2013-2014 school year.
Thank you very much. Council, have any questions? Mr. Mumgarth.
You're all from Papillion South?
Mm-hmm.
What's going on at the other school? Why are you domi... Why are you dominating the leadership?
We have noticed that. We have a few members that are from the Papillion La Vista North High School. We have noticed, we think influencing it is Officer Tackett is... Does work in the school... In the Titan area of the school district, and so he does a lot of recruiting from that school. We've tried a lot to get monarchs to come, but we don't really...
Well, my constituents are monarchs, so I would encourage you to keep trying to see that... I have nothing against leadership from Papillion South, but I know there are some very, very fine people who live in the north end of town also.
Absolutely.
And I would encourage you to, you know, keep trying and encourage them to also participate. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Council members that have the wards in the monarchs, encourage you to help spread the word a little bit, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Probably one of the more significant things that's taken place in the last couple of weeks since we last convened is the CNN Money Magazine came out with their 2013 rankings, and as most of you are aware, that Papillion was ranked in the top 10. Once again, that's the fifth consecutive year that Papillion has been ranked, the fourth consecutive year that we've been ranked in the top 10. And I won't steal any of Mayor Black's thunder because I know he's got certain ways he likes to discuss that issue, but I do want to call to the council's attention and the public at large that, in discussing this, that we thought it was time that, after five consecutive rankings, that maybe we celebrate as a community a little bit, and towards that end, on August 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., the city will be sponsoring a Celebrate Papillion Rally. There should be some of these particular invitations sitting at your desk, and there's some in the back for the public, or it's on the city website for anybody else. But the tentative plans call for the, both the monarch and Titan bands to be playing at some point. Maybe it's a good recruiting opportunity. And the... I've had discussion with all of you as council members individually, and you've all indicated a willingness to attend that event and to help. We're defining that every day, right, Lori? On throwing something together, but we anticipate, you know, up to 3,000 people to maybe hopefully attend. It'll be a free event and a free meal. Effectively just thanking the citizens of Papillion because, as Mayor Black and I discussed, is that's really who gets the recognition. We probably get far too much credit in City Hall and far too much blame for what goes on when the reality of it is that this is a very good community of almost 30,000-plus people. Even though it says 19,000, there's the SIDs that we consider certainly part of this community, too. So, the 29th, keep your calendar clear, and we'll have a Celebrate Papillion pep rally. I did brief the council last, or two weeks ago also, on the... May have been three, I think, with the way the calendar fell. We did get our certifications into the Department of Roads on the 84th Street Project, the one running south from 370 down to Schram. Again, that was nothing short of a Herculean effort by the city engineer, city attorney, Public Works Department, a very short period of time, but we have the actual certificate in hand. The short version, what that means is that it will go to bid. That project will go to bid on October 10th, and we... The plans call for a completion date of December of 2015. And so, that shovel-ready project in 2008 is now actually going to go to bid. If you want more details on that, we can certainly meet, but wanted to keep you informed of that. And finally, another rather large project, the Public Works Building. You'll recall a couple of... Two council meetings ago, you approved a policy pursuant to state statute to take a somewhat of a different, unique approach, a construction manager risk for the Public Works Building. We've done the advertising for that, and the Reader's Digest version of that project is that during the month of September, there are two committees by the statute and the policy that will meet. One is internal to create a short list of potential contractors. The other one is a... An expanded list that includes some citizen input on who the general contractor will be. I know Mayor Black will be making that appointment, so if you're interested, have somebody interested, you should submit that to him, either as an individual council member or a community member. That may work in your ward to get that selection. The goal is that on October 16th, we will have a contractor, a construction manager, identified and submitted to the entire council for that project. So, on October 16th, that's the actual city council meeting. We'll be asking you to vote on that. So, we got a lot of things really moving pretty quickly on that. So, if you're interested, or you just need more information, or you want to participate, either let Mayor Black or I know, and we'll certainly plug you in and let you know where that's going. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item E1, Ordinance 1671, an ordinance to amend the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, which was adopted on June 4th, 2013 by Ordinance Number 1668 to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date. This is an amendment to the 2012-2013 budget, so the one we're currently in. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, call for proponents and opponents, but we did have a publication error in the paper as far as the date of the public hearing. So, I am going to ask for a motion to continue or table the public hearing until the next council meeting, and then we'll continue it. So, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? This is on the current year's budget, not the upcoming one. Any opponents? Do we have a motion to table the public hearing for Ordinance 1671 to the September 3rd, 2013 city council meeting? Moved by Councilman Ingberg?
Aye.
Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
So, we will continue that public hearing on September 3rd, 2013. Next is item E2, Ordinance 1672, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date. This is the 2013-2014 budget, the upcoming budget. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. I'll call for proponents first, those who want to speak on behalf of the budget. Seeing none, do we have any opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record when you come up.
My name is Scott Usri. Mayor Black, council members of Papillion, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. As I said, I'm Scott Usri. I'm a Papillion resident and live in Harrison Circle and Hunter's Crossing. I'm here with several other riders of the '93, Deb Breeden, Bob Dworkin, Deanna and Ray Ross, David Lee, Connie Fisher, Dan Hill, and Randy Trail. We are here in opposition of the city's budget proposal that does not include funding of O-Metro's Route 93 Tri-Community Express. The current 93 bus serves a wide spectrum of citizens in Papillion. Many of the riders are workers going to their jobs in downtown Omaha area. We work at UP, the World Herald, Woodman of the World, Corps of Engineers, the Zirinsky Federal Building, Wells Fargo Bank, and Physicians Mutual. Some riders even come to Papillion jobs on this bus as it starts from downtown and heads south. You're probably well aware of the reasons. Many of us ride, save a few miles on car, save some money on gas and parking. For others, it's the green thing to do to reduce some emissions. Some ride when getting a car worked on in a local repair shop. For others, it's a chance to read a book, just relax, check emails and texts, or visit with other riders. Others still, the bus is their only transportation. For our city, bus transit reduces the number of vehicles on our main thoroughfares, reduces the wear on our streets, and lowers overall emission, thus improving our quality of life. Transit-friendly, walkable communities reduce reliance on cars and promote higher levels of physical activity. For example, I'm using myself, but I biked to Terra Plaza to catch the bus. As gas prices continue to climb, and they will, more residents will reach that point where they look at for alternatives for their work commute. Will this council be a part of that solution? The citizens, the school district, and the city government are proud of the recognition our city has recently received and continues to receive in being on a short list of best places to live. But to take away something that's probably played a part in your growth and success just seems like a step backwards. We shouldn't be cutting something that is connecting so many of our communities. This is a time to defend this ranking by being progressive and innovative and coming to the table. We urge the council to reinstate the funding for the bus route for the next fiscal year in the short term. Studies have shown that a dollar spent in mass transit generates $4 in economic impact. For the long term, we'd like to request that the cities of Papillion, La Vista, Ralston, and O-Metro to meet along with some of the riders of 93 to brainstorm ways to improve the routes, schedules, and ridership. We are confident that during an additional year of funding, together we can build a plan of action to accomplish several of these things. But before that, we first ask that the council reinstate that funding for the bus route for the next fiscal year. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, we have had a couple of emails from some other people, and those are part of the public record as well. Do we have any other opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record when you come up.
Dan Hill, I'm also a resident of Papillion. I ride the 93 Express. All I really want to say is it's a matter of common sense. When you can provide an economic value as well as a convenience for the citizens of Papillion, why not? I mean, I know for myself personally, I would do the four blocks walk now, he mentioned about being physically fit and having to be active. The other thing is the cost associated with operating a motor vehicle in today's world, you have the capital cost of the initial purchase, you have the maintenance, you have the gas, you have all those sort of things that go into that equation. If you can reduce that just somewhat, and that is exactly what mass transit does, wouldn't it be worth doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? Is Kurt Simon with Metro here tonight? Okay, thank you. Do we have any other opponents? Yes.
I'm Randy Trail. I live at 2006 Eagle Ridge Drive. I've lived there since 1996, and I've taken the bus for about the last year and a half. Someone told me about the bus. I was surprised we had it. He told me about it on a Friday, and on Monday I was there, and I've been taking it ever since. I figure it saves me about $2,000 in just parking and fuel alone, let alone vehicle maintenance. Now, that's not to say that I would expect the city of Papillion to subsidize my savings. I'm not saying that, but it saves everybody that money on the bus. I guess that... I think there are probably quite a few Papillion residents who don't know of the convenience and the service that's available to them, and I don't think that it's this body's responsibility to let those people know that. I don't think that Metro would really spend the money to do that. I'm not sure how that would be accomplished, but I'm sure there are a lot of folks in Papillion that don't know there's a bus that goes downtown or to Mutual of Omaha every day, or they would take advantage of that service. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents?
Good evening. My name is Robert Dworkin. I'm a registered professional engineer. I live in Papillion. I've lived here for over 20 years. We're proud of the city of Papillion. We're proud of the way Papillion has grown over the years. We want to see that continue. We've made some good points right now, and some good points have already been brought up. We think it's a small price to pay to continue to sustain our link with surrounding communities in Omaha. You've already mentioned the... Mr. Hoynes, you've already mentioned the CNN Money Magazine award. Again, city of Papillion made that list. And what were the three criteria that Papillion made that list on? It was good schools, safe streets, and commute to Omaha. Granted, the majority of people do drive cars to commute to Omaha, but there needs to be and continues to need to be an option for mass transit so we can continue to be on that list of the top 10 cities, the best places to live in the United States.
Thank you. Any other opponents? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, just for the people that are here. Next council meeting is when we'll have council discussion and then vote, and if there's any amendments to be made, that's... They'll be at the next council meeting. So, thank you for your feedback. Next is item F1, Resolution R130122, a resolution to approve Amendment Number 3 to the Wastewater Service Agreement with the city of Omaha. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R130122? Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Mr. Stube?
Yeah, Mayor. As the employee of the city of Omaha and the wastewater service agreements come through my department based on a conflict of interest, I'd like to recuse myself from acting on this agenda item.
Okay. We'll take a council vote to see if... To go ahead and approve that abstention. Please vote yes if you approve the abstention. Mr. Mumgarth? That did pass. Mr. Mumgarth?
I'm also an employee of the city of Omaha, but I don't have anything to do with the wastewater treatment system. But as I understand this, this amendment of the agreement has no economic impact on the city of Omaha at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then I'm not going to abstain, but I understand what Mr. Stube is. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Stube is abstaining. Do we have any proponents on the motion to approve? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Except for Mr. Stube, you can't participate in the discussion either. Please vote.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Stube abstains.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R130127, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class A... A Class I liquor license for Three Fishes LLC, doing business as the Hop House Bar and Grill, 11425 South 72nd Street, and a corporate manager application for Michael Fisher. I believe we have a representative of the applicant here. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Yes. My name is Benjamin Pick. I'm the attorney for Three Fishes LLC. With me today is Michael Fisher, owner, controlling member of the entity that looks to have their liquor license approved.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R130127?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug?
Aye.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Mr. Gaines?
I just have a quick question. Looking at your application here, and I realize that many of these offenses are old offenses.
Yes.
But how... What are you going to do to make sure that, A, you're not serving minors and B, not over-serving patrons so that we don't have more of these problems in the city of Papillion?
I'm going to have my bar staff trained through the local law enforcement on the signs of intoxication and the correct checking of valid licenses, and I will be taking that class as well.
Okay. What kind of experience do you have in the bar industry?
I've worked in kitchens mainly, no front-of-house experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg?
One question that was... Some information I received from people living on our ward. Do you play on much outdoor music? The reason why I ask that, when ferrets originally went in there, that was a discussion point at that time as well. As it ended up, it seems to, by and large, been all right. But since you're going to be the operator, I'm curious if you have anything planned in that area, and if so, times of operation, kinds of...
Nothing planned as far as outdoor music, just on the patio itself with speakers, but no concerts or anything planned.
As far as the outdoor patio, I'm just curious, so it doesn't become an issue? Is that something that during the appropriate months, you're going to have open and have music out on the patio? I assume the entire hours of operation?
Correct. If music is played, yeah.
Okay.
And I can control the volume outdoors.
Okay, that was my next question. You or whoever is managing and will control the outside volume?
Correct.
Okay. Bye. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth?
Mr. Ingberg was asking the questions that I... Concern me. You can look back, and in 2006, when this license was originally granted, the existence of that outdoor patio was a concern to council members. And the... Well, I guess the comments we've received from nearby neighbors have shown that we were not off-base, that the closeness of that patio to the houses next door can easily create the problem. So, the questions that Mr. Ingberg was asking you are very appropriate. Do you have a speaker outside there on the patio?
Yes, sir.
Well, okay. We've heard from a neighbor talking about how they really don't enjoy the bass and the level of music that they've heard from ferrets at times.
Okay.
Where's that coming from?
There's... I believe there's three or four speakers on the patio itself.
And is that just playing recorded music that's coming from inside?
Playing through the jukebox, correct.
Okay. Well, I would second Mr. Ingberg's concerns that you need to watch that very diligently, that people on that patio... diligently, that people on that patio can't enjoy the music to the same level as the people inside.
Okay.
It's just a necessity. And, you know, I would encourage any of your neighbors to let us know if they're unhappy with the way that it operates because this is one of the times that we've had an opportunity to deal with the music question and noise question. And you should always be very sensitive that we will be very sensitive to the issue also.
Definitely. And I can always go door-to-door if need be and ask them their opinions.
You should be very friendly with your neighbors.
Yes.
That will go a long way in creating and avoiding problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yeas, one nay. Nay by Councilmember Gaines.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item F3, Resolution R130130, A Resolution to Approve a Partial Annexation Agreement with Sanitary and Improvement District Number 272, Settlers Creek. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R130130? Motion by Councilwoman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. I think the only committee that met is the one that was tonight, the Audit Committee. Mr. Glover, any feedback from the Audit Committee?
Not at this time.
Can you turn your mic on, please, since it is recorded?
Not at this time. We went through a report from the people that we do business with and they kind of explained the process. Our staff did a very good job of explaining the city council members' concerns about how we go through that audit and some of the concerns that may arise, you know, to protect the city. And we, as I understand, our report is due on March 31st. And so sometime in February or the first meeting in March, they will be back and be in front of the city, full city council to get their buses on the audit. So things look like they were in good shape. And we'll find out through the full audit once, once we hit the end of February 1st of March, so.
Very good. Thanks for your work on that. Do we have any comments from the floor? See no comments from the floor. Any council comments? Quiet group tonight. Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Hoynes and I attended the last session of the Papillion Leadership Academy, the 18-month program we've been doing for internal development of next-generation leadership. And that group actually graduated. And we had a celebration with most of the department heads and those individuals. So now we're trying to think of, now that they're alumni, what's next? And then what do we do with the next, with the next class? And we got some good feedback from them. So we'll be revamping for round two and relaunching that. Ms. Myers and I had a quarterly update with Colliers regarding our listing with the Papillion Business Technology Park and what their plans are to keep that on the market and in front of prospects. Tended a community coffee in Lavista with Senator Mike Johans, learned some of the things going on at a federal level. And Congressman Lee Terry will be in Papillion on Thursday over the lunch hour for a same type of town hall, and that's open to the public as well. The last session of the movie series at Sumter was very well-attended. I didn't hear attendance, but I'm going to guess that was close to 1,000 people. Those have been very well-attended. Community appreciates those. And the Twilight Criterion went off strong, had great weather for that, no injuries except for a couple of Band-Aids. And the Sarpy County Economic Outlook event, Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Klug, and I attended that this morning, had some good feedback of, most of it was around infrastructure and what the future of infrastructure looks like for Sarpy County. A lot of conversation about roads, sewer, and water. I think there's some really good cooperation going on in Sarpy County, both with different cities, the county, and the private, private industries. That was a good session. Reminder of the celebration on the 29th at the amphitheater from 5:00 to 8:00. Again, that is to basically give a thanks to the community. When we've gotten the CNN Money Magazine awards before, we haven't made a large deal about them. And I think the council is kind of a common mind of, we want to be careful of how big of a heads we get on that type of deal. But this is five, five times in a row. That award is every other year, so that's a decade. To give you an idea of the significance of that, last year, every time they do it, they evaluate different criteria. And a lot happens to, has to do with what's, what's going on nationally? What makes a good community nationally based on the things at that moment? So one year it might be economics, another time it might be sense of community. So the evaluation criteria changes each time. And last year, three of the cities that were in the top 10 were not even in the top 100 this year. Shows you how much churn there is when they change the criteria. Three of the top 10 this year were not in the top 100 last time. So again, how much churn there is on that list. We've been in the top 10 four times in a row. There's only one other city in the United States that has been on that list four times in a row. So I think the big message is consistency of quality, consistency of service. And a lot of that has to do with residents that care, businesses that give back. We got great civic organizations. We've got good foundations. We got a healthy council. We got healthy administration, great employees. And so we just thought it was a time to, after 10 years and that type of recognition, just to publicly tell the community, thank you. And so that's what all that event is for. So that's from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Sumter Amphitheater on Thursday, August 29th. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.